Getting started, but we'd like to go ahead and call this work session to order. We do have an agenda, I as a coach would ask you to present during this time of our workshop. First of all, is Andy here yet? Eddie Kay?
Andy had to go to Chapel Hill.
Okay.
Back for the class.
Alright.
The two things, as far as the Stanley Recreation Department is concerned, that part of grant is going to be awarded on May the 10th. And Andy Wilson will need pretty sure promised that for the board to be able to travel down to Raleigh, where he won't have any indication whether or not he gets the grant, other than we've gotten very positive feedback from the folks at the park that we're going to be funded, but that award would be on Friday, May 10th in Raleigh.
Okay. It also has come under the Golden Leaf?
Golden Leaf. There was a request from a, to use monies out of the EDC account for continuous improvement training within Graham County. Now it would be open not only to Stanley, to folks at Stanley Furniture, but up to 10 slots per training would be made available to other businesses in Graham County for this funding. That funding was in about $78,100. The total request was $89,100. And the other $11,000 was, what was requested for a fiber optic line to be able to run. It would be one-third of the cost of fiber optic line going to Stanley, which would increase their capacity in opposite of the CAT systems and things like that. They would, they wouldn't have to drive those things from Hop-on if they were sent over there. It becomes the size of the information. What Andy is requesting from the board is asking for support. The EDC Board has approved this, we've got the letter from Golden Leaf approving this request. And also if you want me to mention that, you know, in our previous conversations about the security of the EDC money, where do we stand, you know, if something were to happen to Stanley, they passed a resolution, we got that information from Golden Leaf, where there has to be the amount of funds left in that account that would cover any sort of payback. And that would be roughly about $200,000, worst case scenario. So their funds can never be depleted below that. And it would always be within that. This continuous improvement grant is to the benefit of not only Stanley Furniture, but to other businesses within the county, like I said, and it would not be paid out all at once. It would just be done as those continuous improvement sessions are done.
Okay, Ms. Clerk, if you could remind me, did we not have an action item on this already?
Yes.
On the continuous improvement.
We did.
And with that, the thing that helped me in making the decision on that was, is that Golden Leaf set up a channel EDC, because I mean, everything has to go through them anyway, so that's the thing convinced, convinced me in it. And hopefully, if you talk with Andy too about this, is that our department heads and other members of local government, you know, will fall behind too to take this, take this training. And the thing is, Andy knows about it, because Andy's gone through it. And he, I respect him highly before I even speak about the benefit of the ordinance. Anything else on that?
That's it, that's all my information I have. I have a contract here that he has asked Donna, our attorney Cohen, to review.
Okay. Alright, and that'll be something that we have to review and brought forward later today?
Okay.
As I say, because of the decision on that.
Yes, sir.
Alright, great. Any other questions or comments from the other members? Alright, next on the agenda is Alicia Farm, the director of the Health Department on the Tobacco Free Parks.
We actually have some packets, another couple of us not here, but we have some packets to hand out that has the information in it on the Tobacco Free Park.
Thank you.
We're coming to you today to get some information and to also ask for the request of review and of the possibility of making Graham County Parks and Recreation Tobacco Free. In your package, you'll find the Graham County Tobacco Free Parks information sheet. Kind of goes through during our community health assessment, some of those questions relating to this was actually asked to individuals that were surveyed, through phone surveys and also through other surveys. In Graham County, we actually have a lower percentage of 12% people that's exposed to secondhand smoke at work compared to western North Carolina, which is at 14.2%. For people that want 100% tobacco-free universities and community college, it's kind of evened out to be about the same at 74.7%. The biggest thing here is that the people that wanted in Graham County, that wanted 100% tobacco-free government buildings and grounds is 82.4% in Graham County and 77.8% in western North Carolina. And also tobacco-free parks and public walk-in and bike-in tracks, and you can see it was at 63.3%. About 80% of people do not smoke and about 20% do. If we do decide, Manhattan County actually passed a Tobacco Free in Parks policy that was implemented in April of 2012. Jackson County was just, and we have a copy in your packet, is that, or is coffee in the packet? In the back of the packet, of Jackson County's policy that was just passed April 15th, of like, 13th, so it was just passed last week. Talking with the health director there last week, Long Marine Chapel Hill, said it seemed to have very good reception to the community, and of course, they've not had an opportunity of major enforcement of that yet, but it does seem to be a positive outlook and a positive reception into the community as being able to make their Parks and Recreation Tobacco Free. Some of the questions, of course, is the enforcement of this, and more than anything, it will be basically the Recreation Department, if you're in the county, kind of policing that area, and then if there is need for fines or implementation of enforcement, then it may go to the law enforcement here. Have we received information from the Recreation Park as of now as her support on this?
Support, we're still working on that right at the moment.
Okay. So I think we're still working, Jason's very, very busy right now with all the softball and baseball that's going on, so we are still working on that. And have not actually heard back from the sheriff as of now for that. So that is something, you know, that we're still working on. We all know secondhand smoke is a major problem. It's, it's very life-threatening, especially to kids. You know, as I've stated in the past, going to the Parks and Recreation, our new playground facility, standing under the pavilion area there, multiple children running in and out while we were working on that bathroom, and underneath the pavilion area with us would be individuals, adults smoking, that would actually kind of fill in that area, so there's the children confusingly running in and out of that. Another standing on ball fields coaching, had individuals, as well, kids are playing softball or soccer, individuals behind them that are smoking, and of course, it just filters right into the dugouts or into the areas that the kids are at. It's a concern for me, you know, not only for the adults and the problems that it has there, but also mostly for the children that we're associating with these Parks and Recreation facilities. Areas that it would affect, of course, is community building area, softball and baseball fields, recreation playground, pool area, any type of recreation facility, our future recreation facility that Graham County now maintains, owns or operates. So that is something. We have put in, of course, a sample policy also in here for you to look at. This sample policy is basically the same sample, or same policy that Jackson County used in past years. Of course, it just references Graham County and the information in that. It also has some information in here on secondhand smoke and on tobacco use for your, for your review. Is there any questions or unless you have any additional comments you'd like to add?
The only comment that I would have is the fact that if you guys decide the class is ordered and it's smoke-free and tobacco-free, excuse me, tobacco-free is better than smoke-free because it's all encompassing and it's better for people understanding what exactly is going on. Our schools are already smoke-free, so if you just continue it throughout the county, it's less confusion. And we have the ability to purchase signs for all the parks paying, we have some signs available currently and some beautiful sites that we can purchase, which are about $80 apiece, so as many as you guys need, we do have the funds for that, as long as we purchase them before the end of May, since we have some budget issues.
Okay. I'd just like to make a comment, and you know, I know we have a limited amount of time in this hour, but the issue along with tobacco-free, I was in the school system when we started that, and it's probably one of the more positive things that you could ever think. And then passing it too on the athletic fields, you know, that were under the jurisdiction of the public school system, I mean, football games, basketball, you know, all these other things. Then you get into the issue, another thing that's coming up rather quickly, and whether we like it or not, I know people who know right to smoke or not to smoke, the issue of restaurants, so smoking or not smoking, issues in bars and such as that. But the day is coming, and I'm seeing a little bit of a foreshadowing of that, where you're not going to be able to apply for grants for anything that we do at Park and Recreation if you do not enforce in some sense a, you know, tobacco-free environment. So I, I see this, and the only question that I would have Alicia right now is, you know, you can have a, you can have a standpoint of saying that you can have a resolution, but the aspect of doing an ordinance is big time, so we're going to have to work out particulars on particular ordinance. So for myself, as one of five on this board, you know, I did support, you know, having this in place, pretty much the way that it works right now, kids that I look to, and not only for adults, but for the kids. I'm a former smoker, I've had a heart attack, I have diabetes, and you can go on and on and on. How much of those are attributable to me smoking? I don't know, but I've been afraid of that for about 12 years now. So I understand the dangers in it, I understand the things that can happen, so, you know, that's a personal anecdote of this. But in that, from the standpoint of kids, I have two grandchildren now and I don't want to worry. I have three kids of my own, and unfortunately, I exposed them to it until I got, before I realized what I was doing with my own kids. So I know there'll be some resistance to this, from the standpoint of the ordinance on things of personal liberties, government has no business telling me what I can and cannot do, and I do understand that, but for us to go and have a recreation park for things of physical activities, and then to have them go in the long school of this, the house school of this, is something else. So this board, I have to have that discussion, and before an ordinance can take place, we have to take certain steps. And this board may not vote it in, I'm just one of five on this particular board, but I've seen the benefit of that for our kids locally. Having done some of the, the surveys during the Drug Break Coalition that existed some years ago, it does make a difference for their kids, so.
And one advantage at this time with the Community Transformation Grant that we have, and you know, the help promotions people here at the Health Department, will be more than happy to do some of the legwork of what an ordinance requires, and being, you know, the public hearing and the postings and everything that's required on that, we'd be more than happy to assist with anything like that that needs to be done, because I know there is a lot of information in the preparing part of that.
Right. I appreciate you saying that, because it's not just something that we can bring up tonight and vote off.
Right. Oh, and we totally understand that.
Yeah, okay. I thought, I mean, I'm, I'm still on learning curve myself, but I know that an ordinance is a very binding, a very binding, it's a law, that's what it comes down to. Alright, any comments or questions?
We also have Hope Rock.
CTQ.
Well, it's actually HIS Electronic Help Records should be, should be ready. That's okay.
Yeah, if you're on the regular gen for electronic help records.
So don't do it here?
Are you planning on staying?
I'm going to have to leave in about 40 minutes, I've got a nine-year-old birthday today, and I've got that list going.
Hot stay.
Okay.
Yeah, because in here.
You can make a comment after the next one.
Okay. The Community Transformation Grant project is what was presented.
That was all the time, I was only doing the other.
And this is Melissa McIver.
Do I?
You just want to end it, please.
Yeah. Go ahead, it's one. Well, I've got Christie here to help you. That would help communities. One of the guidelines, of course, we bill Medicaid and we also bill Medicare for our flu shots. One of the, some of the guidelines that's coming down the system real soon is that by 2014, some point in time during 2014, and by 2015, we're actually, as health facilities, to be able to build, continue building and operate in health systems and records, we're actually going to have to be able to install and have available and use, implement the electronic health records. The current limits state of Carolina, they've been working for, since back in the, I think they said 89, on trying to come up with a system that would meet this, they have spent millions of dollars actually trying to get a system that's called HIS, Health Information Systems, in place that would serve counties. This system is still not adequate to meet our clinical needs, and it's not meeting our needs for billing purposes the way it needs to. This system also goes down multiple times during the week, which means you can't register individuals, you can't get information that you need while the individuals in the house at the time. Your information here kind of gives you some ideals. The difference in, we have looked in what's called a Patagonia Health System. Patagonia Health System, of course, is a private system that we would be purchasing and would pay yearly maintenance fees on. It would, we've had them come in and do presentations, it would cause, allow us to do real-time billing. The companies that already have in place electronic, this Patagonia Health Systems in the health parks across the state, says that it has doubled their intake of revenue. What happens is when that person basically leaves the building, the building's ready to go out, and it can go out right then. With the HIS system, it can go out two, maybe three times a month, period. So it batches out, you know, two times or three times a month. The difference is also with our insurance, such as Blue Cross Blue Shield, seeing that some of those insurance claims, we actually have to do them by paper form, which, of course, anytime you're still doing paper form, you're going to have, you're going to have error more so, especially with lost papers, with the papers that does not ever get to where they're supposed to. When they get there, they get lost because they like electronic health records coming in instead of papers still coming in. So the Patagonian system that we have looked at would allow us, everything to be billed equally, whether it's Medicaid, Blue Cross Blue Shield or whatever, we're actually able to bill, it would all go out at the same time on this electronic health record. Just to kind of give you some of the ideals, the city claim now, file Medicaid requires seven tasks and over 65 steps through the system and the state office. Requires me to have two people actually go through this, the steps to ever get it done. Where the new system, it would cut down massively on my billing person on what all the steps has to be done. The Medicaid payments requires four tasks and 37 steps of filing, and then the payment's coming back in. A lot of times, you try, you spend a lot of time sitting there, waiting on the file to upload because the system, the state is so slow with their server. We have an awesome system here in our county, but it only does it so good with whoever you're actually communicating with. During the midday, there's so many people in the state that tries to use this system that it actually shuts down on reports, you cannot run reports. Registration process, the print, what is it, how many is it, take, print a label, just one label? You click print.
Six times.
Print one label. Six times to print one label. So in a short, basically, HIS system that the state has presented is not user-friendly in, as far as quantity of work. Quality at times is questionable too, due to the fact that you're still having to do the paper trail and you're having to wait so much. Another thing is, when we do have to actually go to electronic health records with this Patagonia Health System, we can scan old records in and have them available. So we've got our carer, which is our medical directors in, at Western, it'll be online system, he can look at this information and back us up right then, instead of us having to try to run up there and have him review something or him waiting on him to come in. And also Marlene at the school, she'll be able to have direct contact with our charts at any time. Another thing is they have all the reports, all the forms that we have to use in that system, or will build as needed within a timeframe. The state system does not, is that correct?
They have, but they've continued to build them, and they've not offered the training adequate for us to be able to actually go and read them.
So that's just the, if, sands and buns of the fact that there's two systems out there, the state system's not the best system. It is the system that's a whole lot cheaper, but is it cheaper on the fact that you're not getting as many revenues and you're having to wait, take so much of your staff time to do it? The Patagonia system, your next page, what you have here? What the state, or I guess the federal government actually is offering right now through the state, is incentive money, that if you go ahead and put in electronic health record systems now that meets meaningful use options, which the HIS does not at this time, but Patagonia would, that we can get for three of our providers, one is a dentist, Marlene's the other one, the doctor carer, because he does not film Medicaid at Western is another one, that we can actually get 21,500 per, per provider for the first year. So that total is $63,750 for the first year. To buy this system is $53,491. So as you can see, we actually will bank money the first year. We will though have the expense of buying probably five or six tablets, maybe $500 apiece that will add to that. So that will be an extra expense. Other thing is though, Patagonia or HIS, neither one does dental records. So we are going to have to consider, you know, looking into the fact that we're going to have to have that too. Last year we priced that, probably for about $12,000, we can have a dental system put in, a few thousand at most. So that may be something we look at either this year or first of next year also, we may be putting in the budget that we need to look at, because neither one's going to do the dental and we're going to have to have it. But as you can kind of see out through there, is after the first year, of course, the dentist will not get the funds, but we will give them to other providers. So it costs a little bit more each year through the five years that we'll be receiving incentive money that it would cost. The question is, do we want to keep trying to use the state system that is not really very user-friendly, or do we want to try to, you know, go into another system and a buyer-owned system that will be more? And also, if we ever want to try to do primary care, we ever want to go to that next step above our pre-planning and actually open up primary care, especially for our family workers, HIS system will not be capable of doing that. So we don't, you know, if we ever want to go any further, we're going to have to get a system either way. So that's another option.
So you're saying the state system will not do that?
It will not manage it.
For the next, the next step. But one, one thing I have to ask, which you probably covered, you covered a lot of information throughout the period, is the, is, for instance, the CAPS program, would that qualify in being able to use it to do plans?
The CAP program? No. They use the EMS, CMS, which is just directly Medicaid right now. So it's, it's a very simple system.
Okay.
Now, they also use an electronic system, what is that called? Barn, no, that's not Barn. Anyway, they have their, their records also are done through, you know, an electronic system now.
Okay.
And then they also have, of course, a chart call too.
Okay.
But it will not, to my knowledge, will not do CAP. But CAP is, is in the middle of the Medicaid brawl of changes, so I think CAP's fixing to go into under access care anyway, so CCNC.
Okay. Alright, so you're proposing this, then, you're going to give us a little while of crunching numbers and all that for sure, right?
I took a long time to get to here. We, I mean, this has not been a quick process, what we went through, we've really took the time to, to review different types of systems, review what other health departments in the state's doing, reviewing what the state system's going to look like, is it giving it time? When did we start with it?
Mine was in 2010.
10, okay. So we've been trying to figure out since May 2010, are we going to be able to use this system, is it going to work for us, you know, what, what is it doing to us for its money? So we took the time, the thing that is holding you up, when is the last time we hit the clock for the Medicaid incentive funds? That's something we need to get to, through P, because this funds, that first year fund is this year. You miss it, it's gone. You don't get to go back and say we're starting here at one.
We have to break it in 100 percent, Paul.
Right. So, and that's, it's going to take us probably three months of rollout to get it into 100% use.
Okay. Alright.
And that's a good case scenario, everything going right.
Yes.
Yeah, have you, have you got any extras that you know about on the money-wise?
Well, you know, I didn't want to emphasize, I've, I've had clients that in the past who have gone to the EMR systems and have been able to avail themselves of these incentives. So, you know, if, if this is something the board wants to do, I would urge that we get it done so that we can get these incentives, because we're just throwing money out the window. And because it is a mandatory thing to go to an EMR, you know, we need to move on it as put these.
When's the deadline on that, Alicia? Do you have an idea? They're always, tell us, here's what you've got to do, and of course, they don't throw much money at it.
We sent email after email, but they're trying to get an answer to that. They have not, they walked around answering it, not to the response.
How many are you committed to the state? I mean, does you have an idea of how many are in the system?
This system alone, I think, has 10.
10?
Because there's some other systems out there, right? It's probably, you know, at a gas, probably close to 30% of health departments as a whole is one off the state system.
Okay. I will have a little bit down that at the Health Department, you could be able to send this to a doctor?
Yes.
Using this?
It'll connect.
Using this system?
One other thing.
If that doctor is connected.
Just in my research, I, I made some contact with this former doc that I used to do work for, and he was very anti-EMR to start with, because he'd always just done it the old-fashioned way, like he was hoping he would retire before he had to do it. But he, he's been very pleased at how his cash flow back in has just, where it may take two to four weeks to get a payment, they're coming back in days. So it's, it's really enhanced his cash flow where he thought it was just going to drain on his system. He's seen a tremendous boost to his ability to maintain his cash flow. And otherwise, we're not, we don't see the level and the number of patients, the health department does, but in this day and age, we need that turnaround as quick as we can get it. So that's one of the pluses.
And that's one of the pluses, I mentioned, you know, that the turnaround's at least seven days here or so.
Just so I'm clear then, the $63,000 will be a year after you. Is that, or is that just the first?
First year.
How much does the lawsuit with the user pay after that, a year?
It's in the.
I don't have one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That was my question, I didn't.
You're welcome at my call.
Okay, sure. Thanks.
Is there any other questions?
No, that was a good presentation. I appreciate it. Anybody else have a question or comment? Okay, thank you very much. This time I'd like to recognize this is Pat Allen and Farida Elar, the Talley Team presentation. Good to see you.
Farida couldn't make her stand, and then she handed off the key. And this is Kyle, the local child vitality prevention team, or CFPT. And what we did is that we reviewed information in cases, deceased county residents under age 18, due to fatalities or not due to abuse and neglect. It's that they die because of abuse or neglect, it goes to DMS, because they're protected for being in the care. So we don't have a lot of cases that we have to review, which is really good, but we do have, we do have to do meetings and we do have to look at implicit cases that, that came across, you know, our, our. that, uh, that come across, you know, our, uh, our role at the health department. It is the state law, but we do this. And, uh, we have to have the members right now. I gave you a copy of the current members. And it goes according to, uh, they give us the list of who has to be on there. I know that, uh, county board of commissioners have to appoint three, which those three are, uh, Larry Henry with EMM, uh, Mia Tisdale with the sheriff's department, and Judy Orr as a parent of a deceased child. The county board of health, one person as a healthcare provider, and that is Marlene Carter that does that role. And the state sends us, uh, hanging out. They're usually a year to a year behind when a child has died, so we don't get information right away. Uh, we usually contact everybody that, uh, is on the board here and, uh, we usually give three or four weeks notice that we're gonna get together. And, uh, the role of the, uh, of each board member, if they have any information from their agency on that child or that family, it will be their role to bring that information to the, to the board so that we can review and have all the information that we need. Uh, right now, the current members are myself, I am the chairperson, Rita Eller, she's the review coordinator. She helps get information together and kinda keeps all the, uh, board members on task and just let this have information as we need or we see that for that. Uh, Lisha Horn, she's director of health director. Larry Henry, EMM. Letitia Wiggins, sheriff, Mr. Paul Seston. Judy Orr is the parent, and Marlene Carter is the, the medical partner. Donna Cady, Grand County DS, director. Heather Phillips is the guardian at line. Mia Tisdale is the sheriff's department, and Tracy Jones, she worked the county DS. Um, we did have to complete a survey, we get to do it every year. Uh, we have, uh, Rita and myself were able to complete an orientation webinar. It was a three-tier, uh, system, so there was about three parts to that. Uh, for the calendar years twenty-eleven, we did not receive any child death reports for the CFPT Grand County. And for twenty-twelve, the data is incomplete, we do not have that data yet. So, uh, some of the information too that we would like to have more training on is that for water safety, suicide prevention, fire safety, and just ways to build our, uh, CFPT team. Uh, we'd be requested with the state, as far as just a suggestion, that we'd be able to get our reports in a more timely manner and more clarification so that we don't have to, a lot of times we have to go back and forth to the state coordinator and get more information on the cases, and that can take a while or an autopsy. Those take a long time if we're waiting on those. But again, we just, we view those cases, uh, DSS would be separate if they were having to do an actual investigation.
Well, that's been a funny, Pat. One of the things with this, that you're talking about the data, any of you that have ever written a grant, I know there's a lot of you here that have done that, and you're sitting here in two thousand thirteen, you have to go to two thousand and ten data. Uh, it just doesn't add up. You know, it's hard to, hard to get a grant, so I understand what you're saying about that. But one of the things that I, and I won't say this, and I don't wanna drag this out of you, is that presently, I'm sitting on the Smoky Mountain, Smoky Mountain Center Board for Grand County. And I noticed in here, you know, with regard to kids that end up in these relationships, you know, sometimes it costs their life, you know, in abuse, and you said other than abuse when you started the presentation in this. Uh, but getting services to Grand County is a critical issue. And, um, I and the county manager both sit on this board. And, uh, our Smoky Mountain Center has tried to educate me to the fact that it's better for them to grow larger, uh, better for them to grow larger and as a, they're now what they call a, an MCO. Uh, you know, their care organization, basically they've turned into an insurance company. And, uh, we have around eighty-eight hundred people in this county. And if you need mental health services, you know, I think we have one provider. And I was taken to school one night at a meeting over it. But if our kids can't get access to better, not just better, it, I'm saying what we have is doing all we can, but we need more. And Smoky Mountain Center right now, I'm just gonna go ahead and say it, I don't care. Uh, they're looking about absorbing Monmouth County, Henderson County, Transylvania County. They're looking to absorb the old Western Highlands Network. And I was in a phone conference today with our county manager, and they're trying to convince me that them doing that and absorbing, merging with them is gonna make things better for Grand County. So, you keep your ears to the press, it may not mean anything to you, uh, but it will someday when you're having to find yourself in meetings and mental health services, and you're gonna have to drive from here to Tampa to find it. So, you know, it's just a question of how those things are done. So that, that's not a personal bag on my own, it's, it's one of those that has to do with the people in our county. You know, mental health services, nobody wants to talk about mental health, but I'll talk about it all day. People need that, and we've seen the results of some of this, and some of the lost kids, and I've seen it in my life and career. So I just wanted to put that in your ear, I'd let you know that Smoky Mountain Center is considering that. And they're asking me, and they're asking our county manager, they're asking Grand County, uh, to go and approve the merger. So, you hear anything about us not being too cooperative, it's true. So we'll just leave it at that. But, Pat, I do so appreciate you giving us the report, I have a better understanding of what this is about.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments for Miss Allen, Bobby? Anybody? That was a, thank you, Pat. Alright, this time, uh, we'd like to recognize, uh, Becky, Becky Garland?
I'm the chairman of the, I have Steve Jordan and Tabitha Mahler asked to be put on the workshop, and Becky agreed and waited on nerves if that's okay, and allowed Steve Jordan to speak first.
There he is. Welcome, Commissioner Jordan. That's our friend.
I see y'all.
Good to see you.
Kinda set up a little bit different while we got going over, but just ours, same business, so yeah.
Welcome, Steve.
I heard y'all speak on the, you know, the health there. There may be some kind of grant that you can get to help finance some of the money to help you get that, you know, or you can get the, all the- equipment stuff like that, so, but I just wanted, you know, which you probably done knows that.
Yeah, I know.
But anyway, the reason I'm over here, I, uh, me and my dad, we played music on the Fort Els Lawn, I mean, pretty much all of our life, and, uh, and Jack Brooms told him that, you know, I'd like to come back to Grand County, play this Fourth of July with my band last year, and, uh, so I called him up Saturday, and Jack said he didn't have a spot for us. And, so I just, you know, this is my hometown and it'll always be my hometown, no matter where else I go. People ask me now where I'm from, I said, well, I was there, you know, so. But I would just like to say that I feel like that I've just been pushed down a little bit, and if anything y'all can do, uh, help us come over, you know, on the Fourth of July that weekend, we'd be glad to come play and help y'all. Cause just to bring a lot of old members back on, my dad's playing up there, I mean, forever. When Leonard Lloyd was running all the music and stuff like that. But I appreciate anything else you can do. And, uh, you know, very many things that we can do for you in Cherokee County, feel free to call our county manager, call us. That's what I wanted to speak on.
Alright, thank you, thanks, Steve. Thanks for coming over. You've always had a good working relationship with Cherokee. I've got to know them very well, I've run into him a couple times at restaurants, they have, he actually says hello to me, which is really, really good. Thanks, Steve.
I believe Steve did share with me too that they, you never have charge, you, you don't charge greatly?
I didn't. I never did ever charge nobody when I come over here, you know, but, I mean, I just wanna be back home, play music, you know.
I hear you. That's the, uh, okay, let's see, uh, Tabitha, do you want a minute now?
Sure.
Alright, we have time. About eighteen minutes.
We've got a couple items, the first thing, um, could be about the traveling tourism building. And, um, I'm gonna let Lavanda introduce that, she's one of our newest members of our traveling tourism board. So I'm gonna go ahead and let her speak to you guys. And then I've got one other issue I just want to, in the workshop to introduce, and then we can go from there.
Um, like you said, I'm the newest member of the traveling tourism board, and they've elected me to be, uh, chairman of the building committee. Uh, my purpose today is to bring you up to speed on my building plans. We've spoke with Pam Schaefer at United Community about the lot next to, to the bank. Uh, she seems favorable that the bank will be willing to sign a long-term lease with the county to allow us to build a new traveling tourism building on that spot. Uh, we'd like to build this building for several reasons, it would give us a simpler location, it's easier for our tourists to find. It would create a beautiful focal point for the county. It would allow us to have more parking, and if you've been down to see Tabitha, you know she definitely needs more storage. Uh, it would allow the county to have a place for meetings for other municipal groups or nonprofit groups. And most importantly, it would emphasize our county heritage by creating a landmark of some of the area highlights. Uh, in order to make this possible, we will exhaust all efforts to secure that, grants for the building as well as community donations, but we may have to borrow money, depending on what our budget ends up being. Uh, we want the board of commissioners to be aware of our plans and give us your approval to proceed and permission to use the small portion of land next to this lot where the old railroad comes through, that can be used for additional parking or picnic areas or, or places where tourists can enjoy. Uh, Ms. Schaefer has said if we would draft a letter of commitment or our intentions to the bank from the county, um, that she would send it on to the powers that be with United Community. So we'd like to have y'all's permission to move forward with that.
Okay. Um, there's some, some questions that jump to the mind immediately about that, and I don't know if travel tourism can actually go and take that long.
That would be up to a local government commissioner. I was there, they're, you know, they are even-
Separate, separated it is.
Yeah, they're-
So the local government commissioner decides.
And so we would need to do this, go through the same process and do the diligence with them to obtain a loan, uh, long application, appraisals, commitments from the, the bank because of the issue of the land and the property. And I've already advised the TNT board what those requirements are.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
So they, they understand those requirements. Uh, but before I can make any moves towards making any type of long application for the LTC board to approve or disapprove, then I have to have all my decks in a row with endorsement by the commissioners and all those things, uh, in place.
And before we start exploring those options, we need to make sure we can secure a long-term lease from the bank.
And how long is long-term? Because making investments of a, a building on that, and there's a question-
We're thinking thirty to fifty years, something like that.
I'll be going.
He says that's supposed to be a positive.
No, I'll move you on.
You would go at least half a year, right?
Well, the next question that I would have is this, and I'm being, I'm loving. The next question that I would have of this is the property adjoining this, that you're talking about from the parking lot that the United Community Bank offers, what you're talking about, that larger piece of property. And that next piece of property, we'd actually had it looked at, and as I can understand, it's nothing but utilities under the ground.
Right, but it was, we could still put picnic, we could still put picnic tables there for our tourists.
So you understand what I'm saying?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, there's electrical, there's-
There's been a heart construction, right?
Yeah, because, and these, oh, I'm sorry.
But, but of course we did run into those issues when we start talking about this property, we got David Pope, Billings, that would come down and-
Well, that's where my information came from, because we were looking at it too. We were talking about pop, a point of presence for, uh, another project that's on, uh, coming, you know, about, you know, where we can set that, where is it gonna be? And, uh, that has to do with, uh, fiber for internet access. And we got to looking at it, boy, it's a landmark, and it really is.
And actually, it's a person parking also. So it does have some benefit, especially if we gain that property, the, the bank owns.
Okay. And the next question, I'll be quiet, then, I'm, why am I doing all the talking?
No, give you that question.
No.
Strong voice, no allergies.
No, I've got the allergies. The question is, is we as the county, we're gonna be making the application?
No, the traveling tourism authority would make the application.
Okay.
The way I understand it, because they have to have their own audit. They are considered a separate entity, even though they're underneath EMR of Grand County, and they show up under Grand County on the audit report. They're their own entity as far as open government fish, and we have to do our own separate reporting and everything for them now because they're their own authority. So the TNT authority would make the application.
Okay.
Now, if, now I'm just being the devil's advocate, if LGC said, well, you know, I'm not sure that they have enough revenue or whatever to support that, which I'm thinking they're gonna talk about that in a minute, then they may ask Grand County to indemnify the loan, uh, in the, in the, in the instance that, let's say that some board of commissioners came along and said, we don't want a TNT authority anymore, we want it all under our purview, like it used to be. Then Grand County may have to indemnify it because some future board may come in and say, we don't want this authority anymore, we're gonna run it. And they would need that assurance that Grand County would come in and make those payments and see to it that there was enough occupancy tax revenue to support it. So I'm just playing devil's advocate, that could be things that LGC can come back with. Uh, and, and then that would be a discussion that the board commissioners and the TNT board would be to have.
It'd be like a joint venture with, with TNT for the, the money. And once again, I should any future board saying we don't wanna do it this way, then being a partner in that vision, then the paper would fall to the board.
And I'm-
You could still take it out of tax money, though.
Exactly, the occupancy tax.
So you could still take that, sign the files.
And one thing, right. One thing that the TNT board did, I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, but one thing that the TNT board did their last meeting a couple of weeks ago was to implement a capital reserve fund so that they're beginning, as of two weeks ago, to begin to move some money into that capital reserve fund to, to hold it there to create the debt service payment. So there, in other words, they're kinda creating a safety fund to make sure that the debt service money is sitting there to make the payments. So, you know, just to give you that assurance, they're already thinking forward, they wanna make sure money's laying there in perpetuity so that the debt service can be-
Yeah, what Ms. Dittmore said is very important, because the monies are there, and boards and commissioners have nothing to do with that money.
Exactly, exactly.
And I don't care who you tell that to.
And that is, that is-
And there, yeah, and that makes a lot of sense, and that needs to be set aside because it's government board, it's all in it. But, you know, here's another thought, this is just right off the top of my head. I think we'd be making a good move to do, uh, if we could make a contribution of that little piece of land toward collateral for the loan. I'd like, well, personally, I, what are you gonna do with it?
To TNT.
I mean, I don't know, that's a board decision, I'm just throwing it out there. Cause until then, that's just gonna be an ISO. And that's not gonna fit in with what's going on on Main Street, or down the bypass right now. So if you, if you can work it out, and we see how it works out, I'm, I'm, I think it's a grand idea. Um, and I hope, you know, once we get all the infrastructure in place, we'll be, uh, having more places for people to stay and more occupancy tax. I think it's a good idea that we'd go and increase the occupancy tax rate. But you see?
Would you like to continue?
Welcome. Now, listen, I, I'm telling you that, that, you know, there are restrictions on that, and I'm getting to understand more clearly how those work regarding municipalities and counties and how much can be thrown into that. I, I have never rented a room in Robbinsville in Grand County. I never have. I never have. And those that come through, and it's not that we're trying to gouge or stick them, but as a guy says, in the town of Robbinsville, if they go to the bathroom, we're paying for that. If they're throwing trash out, we're paying for that. We need to have you, you know, in all different shapes, form, and fashion to be able to draw people to the area, and we need to be able to sustain, take care of services for the folks that are here.
I just came from another state, and there were three different occupancy taxes out. There was state, county, and municipality.
I found out that Grand County had two cents to leave automatically, like I'm on a trash plate.
It came up to like seventeen, four, five percent occupancy.
But that is something that we need to have a conversation about. And I know that the people that need to be in there are the people in chamber, the people in travel tourism, the folks that are in the hospitality industry in Grand County that come to terms with it, either you're going to do it or not. Because this board sitting here, we realize dollars and cents, and Lord goodness knows we do, but if you could gather the source of revenue and you're not using it, then why?
Well, in order for the building fund to go forward and for us to be sure that we have enough money to spend all the shore of the staffing and the shows that we're doing, we'd like to also increase that occupancy tax. And Swain County has become a very great partner of ours. As far as we've got a director over there that's been doing the job for close to a decade, and I've made a very good friend. She has been so willing to share anything and everything, as, to even brochures, take my logo while that yours on. She's just been, become a very great partner. They increased their occupancy tax last year, and it took them about three months to do it because of a public comment section that you do have to have. So one of the things I think I'd like to try and do is get a public comment section at the next board meeting or the following board meeting, depending on the schedule. But those funds are going to go to our budget. Currently, our budget is a hundred and forty thousand dollars. And if we had six percent, it would bring our budget to about two hundred and ten thousand dollars. And that's going to allow us to continue to do eight shows. It's going to continue to keep a full-time hostess, because right now we have a part-time hostess. It will increase the printed and magazine campaigns that we have going on. Technology is always changing. There's going to be smart applications and different things for mapping and interactive things on the web. And then also the building of the building and the decorating of that building, because the inside has to look just as homey, cozy, and charming as what our area is going to be to give that welcoming feel. So another option that we have is the one percent sales tax, specifically restaurant tax. And right now, there are five cities, counties, that have that extra one percent tax. And that would just, it would be easy for the restaurants to just go ahead and take that up in their computers and machines. I'll be looking into how we can go forward with that as well, unless the board is already familiar with how to go forward with that action as well.
I looked at it, it scared me to death. Seriously, I'm not being a seizure. So I looked at the aspect of that, because I believe you came, when you came with that, I was skinning my ankles trying to understand it. So I went and did my homework, and I looked to it, and it can be done. But, you know, we have to look at it from the standpoint of getting everything lined up to do. We just can't sit here and vote it in.
That's right.
You know that. I really know that.
Grand County can do the impossible.
Well, we, well, you know, it's hot right now, and I understand that, and this board does too. And we've got a lot of things rolling right now. And we want to maintain the momentum in that. And I would like to see that happen, the occupancy tax. But there is the issue of municipalities. I don't know if we can go and increase it county-wide, and the municipalities say, "Well, we want so much of it." You see what I'm saying?
I do, and I understand there's been a little bit of talk about that.
Well, see, I don't know exactly how that works, and that's why I'm sitting here saying that. So, and then public hearing, is that going to be, that would be on the standpoint of us saying, "Yes, we're going to pursue an increase in the occupancy."
It just allows the vote to come out. From what I understand, in Swain County, there was two folks that were against it, two folks that were for it, and there was a whole bunch of written letters that were for it. So, but it does give the county and the, all of our friends to be able to come in and voice their opinion and then go forward with our action. But we would like for the County Commissioners, of course, to be able to make that motion and be able to get that extra money flowing through the Travel and Tourism Office.
We need to have further conversations, that's without a share.
Well, Barry came in January, so I guess what I'm asking is a little bit more by next meeting, if we could make some motion decisions and a little bit more action, because this is the peak of our budget. And if it only does take a couple of months, we should be able to get some of those extra monies instead of it being on the shoulder and in the winter months.
Okay. And we...
I have one quick question.
Yes, sir.
This goes back to the building. Is there any opportunity for us to weigh over all the land that you're looking at building?
I don't think it's been addressed, but I think we can always ask.
I mean, that's just, you know, that way you don't have to...
United Community, their concern is that worst-case scenario, travel tourism dissolves in fifteen years, and the county sells the building, and someone buys it, it's a punch over there. They just want to take the initiative.
Understood.
Okay, I hate to be appealing to you, but we only have two minutes left. Mr. Dittmore?
I also would give back to you a little more information later. I spoke to Don Young, our attorney, and I talked concerning the restaurant tax part of that. But I also spoke to Roger West not long ago. And why I get it from them, it's been a while, so I could be wrong. But as far as the increase in occupancy tax part of that, that we would just have to vote on it, which we did on that, and then you have to write a letter of intent, guns, maybe send some of our representatives, and stuff, and they give them.
Okay. You're looking at a guy straight in the eyeball, and he has to understand that part.
Yeah. So I will give you a little more information on that if I have to. But I might not have had enough of a call-in, but...
Right, well, these are the board members as well, because my decision is board. Thank you very much, and I'm sorry if we've run out of time. We have two minutes until the regular session starts. We need to run and take a quick break, we better do it in two minutes. Thank you, folks, very much for your input.